All right, thanks so much. Welcome, everybody, to the Merck Rowway Title V and Environmental Justice Impact Statement Public Hearing. We're going to start off the meeting with some welcomes, and I'm going to turn it over to Sharon Rose from Merck for the first welcome.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Merck Rowway Title V Renewal of the Environmental Justice Impact Statement Public Hearing. Thank you for coming to tonight's session. My name is Sharon Rose, and I am the A V P of Facilities at the Merck Rowway site and facilities at the Merck Rowway site.
Good evening, everyone. I'm James Frazwell, Director of Safety and Environment Rowway Facility. I'd like to thank you all for coming to tonight's session. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Tony for the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tony Bianchini. I'm a Principal Consultant with Environmental Resources Management. We're an environmental consulting firm with offices in New Jersey and across the globe. We've been working with Merck for a number of years on this environmental justice impact statement like notification, and are happy to have tonight's hearing. We're going to, I'm going to also introduce Josh Heberly from E R M.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Josh with E R M here handling some of the more technical aspects of the presentation. I'm an air permitting subject matter expert, been working in the industry for 15 years and been supporting Rowway for the last seven. Good evening.
Thank you so much, Josh. We're here tonight for the Merck Rowway site and to share with you more information about Merck Rowway's Title V modification application and its five-year permit Title V renewal application. Also to share the details about the environmental justice impact statement. In 2020, Governor Phil Murphy signed a new environmental justice law that asked the D E P to look at different public health stressors while it was doing a review of permits for certain individual permits in the state. Tonight's public hearing for Merck is our part of the environmental justice regulation and Merck's compliance with that regulation. Tonight, we're going to cover more details about the application renewal and the modification application, as well as more details about the environmental justice impact statement. And we look forward to a collaborative discussion tonight. Next slide, Margot. Thank you. We did the welcome and introductions. I'm going to talk more in a minute about tonight's ground rules. Sharon Rose from Merck will be talking about Merck's commitment to the community. Josh Heberly from E R M will be talking more about Merck Rowway's facility Title V permit renewal and modification application. I'm going to be sharing more details about the environmental justice impact statement, and Josh is going to get into more details about the cumulative risk assessment. I'll be sharing more information about the comment period and about the public notifications that Merck did during this comment period and communicated with the Rowway Linden and communities. We're going to be providing you with more information about how to access the Merck E J I S. And then at the end, there's a public comment where you'll have a chance to answer questions, ask questions and make comments. Next slide, Margot. We can go one more forward. Great, so we have tonight people in the room here at the beautiful Linden Library and also on Zoom. So for people in both locations, please respect the speaker and the listener. When you come up for a public comment, please keep your comments to three minutes total. Please keep your cell phones on silent in the room. If you have to take a call, please do so, but please do so outside the room. And if you're on Zoom, please make sure you're on mute. You should be on mute now, but if you're speaking, you'll be unmuted. When you offer a comment, please give us your contact information, your name and affiliation, if any. And then we're going to take comments from people in the room first, followed by folks on Zoom. Next slide, please. So we have a number of people on Zoom tonight. Welcome to the meeting. All people on Zoom are going to be muted unless they're called upon first. When it's your turn to speak, please make sure you're unmuted. If you have any question or comment during the meeting, please put it in the chat. And we have a couple of my colleagues are monitoring the chat, and we're lining up the folks that ask questions based on the order that they ask questions. And so after we take people in the room, we're going to be taking questions from people on Zoom. As I mentioned at the beginning, this meeting is being recorded. It's going to be available on D E P's website in the next couple of days and also on their YouTube page. And a transcript will also be available. And once again, it's available in English and Spanish, just clicking on the button at the bottom of your screen. Next slide, please. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Sharon Rose from Merck to talk more about the company and its work in Rowway and in Linden. And you can also raise your, I see there's a hand raised from Cassidy. You keep your hand raised if you'd like. I will get to you. I think our colleagues are keeping track who raised their hands in what order, but we'll answer those questions at the end. Thanks.
Thank you again, everyone, for coming to tonight's public hearing. At Merck, known as M S D outside of the United States and Canada, we use the power of leading-edge science to save and improve lives around the world. Our global headquarters located here in Rowway and Linden, and our company employs approximately 75,000 people globally. Our first manufacturing plant was established in Rowway in 1903, and in 2023, we moved headquarters back to the Rowway site, consolidating four of our New Jersey campuses to the Rowway campus. Through this consolidation, we were able to reduce perfootage and energy and water consumption, supporting companies on company's net zero commitment. The headquarters site currently employs 6,800 employees. Excellent. At Merck, we operate responsibly every day to ensure safe, sustainable, and a healthy future for communities throughout the world. Our company focuses in four areas. Access to health, our employees, sustainability, and ethics and values. We seek to ensure that our products are accessible and affordable worldwide in collaboration with our global health stakeholders. We recognize that our ability to sell depends on the integrity, knowledge, and skills of our employees. We are committed to enabling a safe, and sustainable, and healthy future. And our ethics and values are at the center of everything that we do. We are committed to earning the trust and confidence of our stakeholders. Okay, next slide. So Merck has a lot of history of environmental stewardship and compliance. A healthy planet is essential to human and animal health and sustainability of our business. On this slide, you'll see some statistics on how we're working toward our client and climate and environmental goals. Merck is committed to a net zero for our greenhouse gas emissions across the globe by 2035. We've reduced our greenhouse gas emissions 16% from 2019 baseline, and our goal is to reduce it by 46% by 2030. We source 61% of our electricity from renewable sources. We've signed a number of partnership engagements and virtual power purchase agreements, as well as to help meet our net zero goals. Next slide. As I've mentioned before, our first manufacturing plant was established back in Rowway in 1903, and Merck has moved our global headquarters back during 2023. We are deeply committed to Rowway and Linden communities and are proud to be an integral part of them. Here you see several of the initiatives that we are involved with, and there are others that we're involved with as well. We annually host a number of STEM events with local schools in the area. We have a future scholars mentor program, a monthly mentoring program with high school students. Students to Science works with communities around our Wawa campus and provides STEM education to predominantly minority and economically disadvantaged children. And in the fall of 2020, Merck employees volunteered with a one tree planted to plant a micro forest at the Grover Cleveland Elementary School in Rowa. Here on this slide, you'll see some of the local community grant recipients that have received grants through our grant program. Our community engagement programs aim to build stronger communities where employees live and work by helping us. Here you see a community that might find Rowway Linden areas, which includes the Rowway Community Action Organization, Rowway River Watershed Association, the N J P A C, Alzheimer, New Jersey, and there are many other community recipients as well. With that, I'm going to turn back over to Tony.
Thanks so much, Sharon. Margot and Liz, can you give me a thumbs up if you can still hear us? We turned off the microphone in the room.
We can.
All right, thank you, Liz. All right, next, I'm going to turn it over to Josh Heberly from E R M, who's going to talk more technical details about the Title V permit renewal and modification application.
Hey, thanks, Tony. So we're going to go no microphone, right? Okay, I'll project. So good evening, everyone, joining in person and online. I'm Josh. Like I said, I'm the technical expert here tonight, so I'll be covering some of the pieces about the actual Title V permit itself. So I'm sure a lot of people are asking themselves, what is a Title V permit? So it's Title V of the Clean Air Act, which is a large federal legislation to curb air pollution. So facilities like Merck that emit above certain thresholds of air pollutants are required to have this type of permit. And so the way I typically explain it to the general public is that it's really more like a comprehensive air quality license with the state and with the EPA at a federal level. So it outlines all the rules that Merck must follow to keep emissions in check, both across the entire facility and for specific equipment. So it's not just federal rules, but also state regulations too, all bundled into one document from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, or what you'll hear me refer to as the D E P. Next slide, Margot. Thank you. So permits aren't static. They evolve as facilities grow or change, and to that end, Merck has submitted a modification request. This is about updating the permit to reflect new equipment being added for various projects. For example, as part of the MAX project, we're adding tanks, modifying prep lab, installing a drumming station along with some other support equipment. So these changes are necessary to support ongoing operations, and they've been carefully reviewed to ensure that they don't negatively impact air quality. Next slide. So we've got the modification, which is how you change things at the site. But you also have what's called a Title V permit renewal. So you have to submit that every five years, which is the term with the federal EPA regulators. Where it gets a little more involved and why we're here tonight is because of New Jersey's environmental justice rules. The renewal triggers a requirement for something called an environmental justice impact statement, or an E J I S. And as a part of that, there's the public information process, which is why we're here tonight, to hear your thoughts and make sure the community is part of the conversation before any final decisions are made. Turn it back to Tony before I hop back up in a couple of slides.
Thanks so much, Josh. Thanks, Margot, for switching the slide. So we're going to talk more about what an environmental justice impact statement is. On the screen here, you'll see what the D E P's definition is. That's Department of Environmental Protection. They say that the E J I S is an extensive review of environmental and public health conditions that exist in an overburdened community. It's also known as an O B C, that identifies and analyzes the existing adverse environmental and public health stressors, the cumulative stressors and the facility's potential impact on those stressors, and mitigations that the company can take to mitigate those cumulative stressors in the community. It's a very comprehensive document. I would say the Merck one is over 150 pages long, includes details about the resources that the facility uses, and as I mentioned before, what's coming out of the facility and what the facility is using to mitigate those impacts. Next slide, please. You'll see here the Merck campus in that red outline. As Sharon mentioned, the company consolidated back into this location. It's the global headquarters for Merck. It's a full city block, and it's founded on the north by the Northeast Railroad. On the east, it's founded by East Scott Avenue. On the south, by West Egger Avenue. And then to the east, it's Patterson and Pleasant Streets. Next slide, please. So I just mentioned overburdened communities, and the D E P uses a number of different tools to determine overburdened communities. And what the E J mapping tool on its website shows is the location of overburdened communities. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a second. The presence of environmental and public health stressors, and how the adverse cumulative stressors of all of the facilities that are in this specific area, not just the Merck facility, but all the facilities that make up our industry in New Jersey. They've got all those together. And then the O B Cs in New Jersey are defined as at least 35% households qualify as low income, at least 40% of households qualify as minority, and at least 40% of the households qualify as English is a second language and limited English proficiency. So they're looking at, and you'll see from the O B C map, there are O B Cs throughout New Jersey, as New Jersey is a very diverse state. Next slide. Here on this slide is what they call the overburdened community stressors. So the D E P looks at 20 different cumulative stressors and eight different categories on the screen. In this area of Rowway and Linden, there are 22 of those, 22 adverse cumulative stressors. So it covers things like concentrated areas of air pollution, where it has ozone particulate matter and some other various things. It talks about mobile sources of air pollution, so that's the type of trucks, railroads, car, regular cars in the area. Next stressor is contaminated sites, so that's historic contaminated sites that are being cleaned up or still being identified. Transport stations, scrap metal facilities, solid waste facilities is another category. Point sources of water pollution, so that's the drinking water. And then public health impacts, density and proximity stressors, which are things like permitted air sites, where Merck is already a permitted air site. And then they look at emergency planning sites and other type of sites. And then the last stressor is the social determinants of health. That's level of high school education, level of employment. It's really important to remember that Merck is not a newly permitted air facility. It's just one of the many facilities in Union County in the state of New Jersey that has to follow these new E J regulations, as it is a major permit holder. As Josh talked about before, that's a title V permit holder, so it has to go through this E J regulation. Next slide, Margot. Thanks so much. So like I said before, the E J I S is a really extensive document. It's about over 150 pages. It took us a while to work on it with Merck, and then it took the D E P a while to review it and ensure it was okay for public distribution. That E J I S, I'm going to talk to you about that in a second, about how you can obtain that. But it has a lot of different sections from the executive summary to summarize the entire document. It talks about the zoning and the makeup of the Rowway and Linden communities that the Merck facility exists in. Talks about the purpose of the facility. It's certainly an existing facility, but we cover the Title V permit, the renewal, the modification, what comes into it, what are the processes that Merck is using to control emissions at the site? What is the construction and operation schedule for those modifications and when they'll be building? It also includes the federal, state, and local permits that are required to operate the facility. It's also modified this permit. There are no E J, local E J ordinances, but the E J I S asks for you to look at local E J ordinances. We helped Merck do a number of different E J screenings, so we used the U S Census. We used the EPA's E J screening tool when it was still available. We also use the D E P's E J map, like I mentioned before. We conducted a really extensive environmental and public health stressor impact assessment, and Josh is going to talk more about that in a second. We had a public participation plan in there about how our folks were going to communicate with the Rowway and Linden communities about our comment period, about all of our documents. There was a supplemental detail section, which talked about all the different resources that the facility uses, a lot of detailed maps in there. And then there were a lot of technical details too, that Josh is going to be speaking about in a bit, from the control measures analysis to the technical feasibility analysis. We also did a facility-wide risk assessment as part of this process. So a lot of technical details for you to take a look at if you want to take a look at the E J I S. Next slide, please. So the next five slides, we're going to provide further details about the document, just high-level stuff. I mentioned a lot of this already. The Merck facility is in Rowway and Linden on the border, so it travels the border. There's two different census tracts, which you see on the screen there. The city of Linden is heavily zoned industrial, and Rowway, a majority of it is residential with smaller areas of commercial and industrial, also home to many parks and open spaces. As I mentioned before, the facility has existed since 1903. The company moved back its consolidated headquarters in 2023, so it has over 120 years' history in this community and in giving back and supporting this community. It's going to continue to serve as its global headquarters and supports some additional pharmaceutical R and D activities. The purpose, and the E J I S talks about, like I said before, the purpose of the application, all the technical details, how we're going to control all the emissions from the site. Next slide, please. We talked about this before too. It includes a schedule of operations. The site currently operates with 36 different permits to ensure compliance. So it really believes in compliance and working with the government, and that's what we're doing here tonight as well. There's no local E J ordinances, like I mentioned before. We use a lot of different tools to map the area, to see what types of folks live here, and to help communicate with them as well. Next slide, Margot. I'm going to turn it over to Josh now to talk more about the environmental and public health stressor impact assessment.
Thanks, Tony. Thanks for that intro. So let's talk about what the E J I S considers in the community. It's not just a technical document. It's a deep dive into how Merck's operations might affect the surrounding community, especially in areas already facing environmental challenges. The E J I S looks at things like air pollution, traffic, contaminated sites, and waste facilities. For example, as Tony mentioned, Merck is already a source of air pollution, but has controls in place to reduce emissions, and that any new equipment associated with the modification do not add pollutants or increase existing emissions significantly. Next slide, Margot. Right, so continuing that assessment, it's not just air pollution that we're looking at with the E J I S. Also looks at water pollution, public health impacts, and how close the facility is to sensitive areas like schools or parks. The good news is that the permit changes won't impact drinking water, flooding, or tree canopy, or any of the other stressors identified. While Merck is a permitted site of air pollution, they follow all regulations to minimize any potential risks. One positive impact worth highlighting is Merck's presence boosts local employment, which contributes to better health outcomes and quality of life. Next slide, please. Finally, the E J I S includes some important extras in addition to the main document. There's a public participation, participation plan, which is why we're holding this session tonight. There's also detailed mapping and data on things like air quality, groundwater, and stormwater. And for the technical folks, there's a control measures analysis, which is a review of how Merck is managing emissions from any new equipment. All of this is designed to ensure transparency and accountability and to give the community a voice in the process. Pass it back to Tony.
Thanks so much, Josh. As Josh mentioned, it's about the community, being transparent with the community. Merck did a lot of things to reach out to the community about this public hearing, about the public comment period, about our E J I S. Published the E J I S on the D E P's website on their E J calendar on August 14th. We had a number of different advertisements in multiple newspapers from Star Ledger and NJ.com to Bell, especially to a couple of different weekly newspapers in Rowway and Linden, our town Rowway and Life in Linden. We conducted stakeholder outreach to a number of different Rowway and Linden officials and stakeholders, including property owners spent 200 feet of the property. They received letters, well, signs in English and Spanish were posted up at the site in mid-August. We're having the public hearing tonight at the beautiful Linden Library and on Zoom. And then we have that 90-day public comment period. The D E P requires 60 days. They require 60 days before today's hearing and 30 days after. And so that's what we're doing, the 90-day public comment period. Next slide, please. It's just an illustration of the comment period again. It started August 22nd officially. We're taking comments by email, by mail, tonight at the hearing. Comment period closes on November 22nd. If you'd like to access the Merck E J I S, there's a QR code on the screen here. It's the same QR code as the link down there. The link is d e p dot N J dot gov slash E J slash meetings. The Union part gets to the Union County part, but you don't even need that part in order to view it. And there's a number of different companies that, including Merck, that have public hearing scheduled. The E J I S is there in the same place, very convenient for the D E P to put it there. So we appreciate that, and that's where you can view it. It's also at the, something I didn't mention on the last slide. It's also at the library here in Linden. So the Rowway Libraries with the Rowway and Linden Town clerks, hard copies and digital copies, if you'd like to view it that way. So we encourage you to take a look at it or in the commentary. Next slide, please. We're getting closer to the comment period. So here on the screen again is how you can comment. In addition to commenting tonight, you can email carouselxander@merck, that's C H A R R I S dot Alexander, A L E X A N T E R dot merck at merck dot com, where you can mail me a letter at the E R M offices in Euachem. You can see the address right there on the screen. That information is also in a public notification ad and various other communication documents we provided. All right, next slide, please. Getting closer to the public comment period, so I just want to reiterate some of the ground rules. Please respect the speaker and listener. Want to give everybody a chance in the room and online to speak. If you have a comment, your time limit's three minutes. I will give you a two-minute warning that you have a minute left. After three minutes, we'd love to hear more from you, but please let other people speak first and come back up, either in the room or on Zoom. Again, please give us your contact information so we can respond to you and know who we're talking to. We're going to take questions from anybody in the room first, followed by people on Zoom. Next slide, please. Once again, if you're on Zoom, you're going to be unmuted until you're called upon. If you're calling in on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or star six to unmute and mute yourself. And next slide, please. All right, so now is the time for public comment. Merck welcomes your comments and your questions. Please note that tonight is not a formal Q and A session. Tonight is a public hearing where we'll be formally taking your comments and responding to your comments and your questions at the end of the comment period as part of our environmental justice compliance. We're going to be creating a comprehensive document of all the outreach activities we did, all the comments we've received, and how we responded to those comments. If your question or comment today is about something that's not related to Title V or not related to E J I S, maybe it's dealing with the site, a concern about the site. We're happy to speak with you in person or offline and address your issue immediately. But otherwise, our comments and our questions are responses to your comments and questions that you've been writing in that report that I mentioned. All right, so is there anybody in the room that has a comment? Okay. We also have comment cards at the front of the room. If anybody has commented in the room, please leave a comment with us. We'd love to put it in the public record. Last call, anybody in the room? No? Okay, we're going to go on to public comment from folks on Zoom. I see a couple of people with their hands raised. And Liz and Margot are helping out. Lighting up. I believe Cassidy had her hand up first.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thanks for calling in, Cassidy.
Great, and I can't do video, I assume.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Could you enable video or no?
Uh, I think.
No worries. No worries if not. I'll just go ahead. Okay. Good evening. My name is Cassie Childs, and I am a senior research and policy analyst at Earth Justice. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm here to urge Merck to consider electrification as a control technology. Taking concrete steps toward understanding its facility's heat system and identifying a strategy to replace their aging boilers and fleet with zero emission alternatives. The Merck facility is located in an overburdened community where residents are exposed to a host of environmental stressors, including hazardous air quality that violates the federal air quality standards. Exposure to air pollution causes elevated rates of asthma, cardiovascular and respiratory disease, cancer and premature premature deaths in communities. With industrial zero emission technologies commercially available, Merck must be doing everything it can to reduce these devastating impacts. Merck's permit application erroneously does not include electrification as a control technology in its technical feasibility analysis. I'll underscore this again. Electrification is not considered as a pollution control technology in their application. The submission is particularly puzzling, given that electrification would eliminate end use emissions. Furthermore, all of Merck's boilers are over twenty years old, past their useful life, inefficient and prime for replacement. Eliminating these boiler emissions would result in a ninety six percent reduction in Merck's particulate matter emissions and a ninety percent reduction in Merck's NOx NOx emissions. Annually boiler electrification would abate two hundred eleven tons of particulate matter emissions, one hundred thirty three tons of NOx emissions, and thirty tons of V O C emissions. Zero emission thermal technologies have developed rapidly in the last decade. Industrial heat pumps, which are three to five times more efficient than natural gas boilers, can be paired with complementary technologies like onsite renewable, waste heat recovery and thermal battery storage. Geothermal heat sources can be tapped directly to. With smart system planning, electrification can create cost savings and increased energy efficiency. Finally, Merck must address its mobile source emissions by electrifying its fleet and building out E V charging infrastructure. In addition to delivery trucks and vans, over four thousand eight hundred employees commute to the facility every workday. And nearby residents feel this impact acutely. Linden residents experience light and medium duty traffic levels that are three hundred forty five percent higher than the state average and heavy duty truck traffic levels that are over three thousand one hundred percent higher than the state average. This disparity in diesel exposure is egregious and has deadly outcomes that could be alleviated with fleet electrification and the build out of charging infrastructure. Merck Pharmaceuticals in its pursuit of delivering innovative health solutions should be looking inwards to ensure the manufacturing of its medical products are not harming the very communities they seek to retreat. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Cassidy. We appreciate your comment. As I mentioned, we're going to put our response to your comment in our environmental justice compliance report that we share with the E P. We appreciate that comment. I think Colin is next. Goodbye, Colin. Should be okay to talk now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. Great, thanks. Hello, my name is Colin Parts and I'm an associate attorney with Earth Justice. I'm here today to highlight multiple issues with Merck's formulation of the standards and requirements for an environmental justice impact statement and to ask that you correct these issues. Merck produces medicines, right, that are intended to promote public health and the company's stated goal, as we heard, is to enable a safe, sustainable and healthy future for all people and communities. But in order to live up to that goal, Merck must follow the law and the E J rules requirements in order to protect the community directly surrounding its facility. First, in its eegis, Merck stated that its facility will not significantly contribute to stressors in the community in which it is located. But the E J law doesn't use that standard. The law only asks whether a facility will cause or contribute to a community's stressors. In passing the E J law, the legislature emphasized that environmental justice communities often deal with many sources of air pollution all at the same time. And they collectively create a disproportionate cumulative burden. So many sources of allegedly insignificant environmental pollution can still together create a very significant collective environmental burden. And Merck seemed to ignore this reality in its E J I S by attempting to insert a significance threshold for impacts on the surrounding community. Second, Merck misinterpreted the localized impact control technology requirements under the E J law in a couple of ways. Under the E J rule, an L I C T analysis must be done where the facility's emissions as a whole have the potential to exceed the state of the art thresholds for any hazardous air pollutant. But Merck instead only looked at emissions from the new emissions units it proposes to install. That meant it significantly narrowed the scope of its examination and asserted that those emissions didn't exceed the threshold, so an L I C T analysis was not required. Ultimately, Merck did still complete an L I C T analysis, but unfortunately, the analysis was flawed. Under the L I C T analysis, a source must examine how to reduce emissions from the facility as a whole, rather than just from new emissions units at the site. But in its L I C T analysis, Merck only looked at potential emissions reductions from the new emissions units. And finally, when it applied the L I C T analysis to this artificially narrowed pool of emissions units, Merck improperly considered costs when looking at which emissions control technologies to use. Costs can't be considered under L I C T. But Merck ignored this by selecting technologies that would, quote, reduce construction and maintenance costs. All of these issues mean that Merck's L I C T analysis is inadequate and that the communities surrounding the facility may face more harmful emissions than they would if Merck had properly completed the analysis. And third, Merck took the wrong approach for its technical feasibility analysis when examining where and how to reduce existing emissions. The E J rule requires a facility to consider options for reducing emissions from all emissions units that collectively emit over twenty percent of facility wide emissions. But Merck instead only considered options for reducing emissions for individual units that individually emitted over twenty percent of facility wide emissions. What that means is that Merck artificially narrowed the scope of its analysis, needlessly exposing the surrounding community to ongoing pollution that could potentially have been reduced if Merck had properly applied the technical feasibility analysis to its facility operations. D E P should require Merck to fix these serious problems, but beyond that, Merck should want to correct these problems if it truly seeks to enable a safe and healthy future for all people and communities, including the community directly affected by its emissions. Thank you.
We appreciate your comment, Colin. I just want to remind you that the Merck facility is not a new facility. It's an existing facility that has to follow the E J compliance. And D E P reviewed our E J S extensive. My person worked on it for a number of years. But we'd be happy to respond to your comment and writing. Next up is Amy.
Yes, thank you. My name is Amy Goldsmith. I'm the New Jersey State Director for Clean Water Action. We're a national organization with over seventy five thousand New Jersey Take Action email subscribers. Our office is located in Elizabeth on North Broad Street. And I routinely pass the Merck facility either via New Jersey Transit on the train when it's reliably running or on Route One. Many years ago, I conducted plant worker and community trainings with the Public Health Institute and the then Oil, Chemical and Atomic Workers Union members at your facility. This facility is surrounded by and has been adversely impacting overburdened communities for decades. On a daily basis, local residents, the workers themselves and area businesses are experiencing twenty two of the twenty five stressors as defined by the New Jersey E J law, which my organization, along with New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance and Ironbound Community Corporation played an instrumental role in its drafting and passing. Merck and the D E P should be taking steps under the New Jersey E J law and Title Five permit renewal process to require extra measures and effort to be taken to reduce emissions that result in both onsite and community impacts. The obligation of both Merck and the D E P should not be to maintain the status quo of air emissions from this facility, but rather to ratchet down or mandate emission reductions through this permit renewal process. Merck cited in its twenty twenty five impact report that electrification of its truck and van fleets as a goal. Why not make this a definitive action with clear fleet turnover goals by date certain along with the installation of necessary electric charging infrastructure to meet the new electric fleet demand? This would significantly reduce diesel emissions, more specifically particulate matter, along with co pollutants like NOx and SOx as well as greenhouse gases. Additionally, Merck's boilers is over twenty years old, as has been mentioned. New technologies are much more efficient and effective in reducing emissions overall and zeroing out greenhouse gas emissions entirely for these boilers. Clean Water Action also urges the D E P through Merck's Title Five permit renewal to require the installation of new electric boilers, as well as ensure the electric boilers are accompanied by other efficiency energy efficiency technologies, like has been mentioned, heat pumps and battery storage. The goal of the New Jersey E J law is to assess community stressors, facility operations and their disproportionate burden and harm to communities, and so too its workers. But more importantly, it was designed to actually reduce emissions and prevent harm to people who are already overburdened with shortened lifespans as a result of their proximity to facilities like Merck. I implore the D E P and Merck to require and and to adopt a more protective permit as Merck seeks to renew its Title Five permit. And the comments made by Earth Justice around the inadequacies and the issues of not looking at the whole facility and its whole whole contribution to the sickening of communities that surround the facility. I support those comments as well. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak at this time.
Thank you so much, Amy. We appreciate it. We're going to respond to you in that compliance report. There was also a slide earlier in the presentation about Merck and renewables. And I encourage you to check that out. So I'm going to share the presentation with the E P and that should be up on the E P's website too. Next up is Brooke. Good evening, Brooke. How are you?
Good evening. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yep. Thanks for joining.
Fantastic. Thank you. Good evening, all. My name is Brooke Helmick, and I have the privilege to serve as the Director of Policy for the New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance, also known as N J E J A. We are a statewide organization with connections in North, Central and South Jersey. And for over twenty years, we have supported community organizations and residents in realizing their right to clean air, land and water. A central guiding mission to our work has focused on requiring emissions reductions from facilities located across the state, but particularly in overburdened communities, which we call environmental justice communities. N J E J A was also a key member of the coalition, as my colleague at Clean Water Action mentioned, which worked to support and pass the environmental justice law. So this work is of deep importance to us. To that end, we are here to offer our guidance and expertise to the team at Merck and at the D E P to implement best practices which can guarantee emissions reductions in the overburdened community surrounding the facility. Therefore, I want to highlight first our overarching point. As a renewal, an existing facility, Merck must, according to the E J rules, quote, analyze and propose feasible control measures necessary to avoid facility contributions to all adverse environmental and public health stressors in the overburdened community, end quote. Therefore, we think that Mark is required by the E J law to decrease its emissions, not just in instances where it proposes additions, but from their existing level of emissions, i.e. the facility contributions to all adverse environmental and public health stressors. Repeatedly, this presentation has emphasized that Mark is a minimal contributor, but any contribution to toxic air emissions and negative public health outcomes is something that must be addressed. As many in this room believe we do not need to accept status, we believe we do not need to accept status quo as something we cannot change or as an insurmountable challenge. But quite the contrary, there are feasible, technically viable solutions that can be implemented and that D E P can require as part of the E J conditions on the permit, which would guarantee emissions reductions. We have many suggestions, which we will put in our written comments, but for the sake of brevity and the three minute limit, these are the two that I'd like to speak on. First, Merck should transition their boilers to fully electric. As you heard from my colleague Cassidy at Earth Justice, this is something that is not only feasible and cost effective, but could guarantee emissions reductions in the local community. Secondly, we recommend that the facility transition their medium and heavy duty fleets to fully electrified, including onsite charging to support fleet needs as well as onsite employees driving electric vehicles. As I'm sure you know, New Jersey has been on the cutting edge of fleet electrification. This is an opportunity for Merck to be a part of this change while also, again, guaranteeing emissions reductions for the local community. All of these thoughts, as well as others that we have decided to share in long form written comment, will be sent to the team by the written comment deadline so that we might provide guidance and our analysis on the feasibility. We welcome further comments and ongoing discussion on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brooke. Appreciate it. Christian Rodriguez.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, thank you. I'm doing well. How are you?
Very good.
Good. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Christian Rodriguez. My pronouns are they/them. And I'm a resident of North, which is also another overburdened community, not too far from Raway and Linden, where Merck operates. Like many of my neighbors, I live with asthma. My sister has lupus. My nephew has learning disabilities, and nearly every member of my family carries some sort of respiratory or autoimmune condition. We live every day with the reality of cumulative impacts, the kind of burden this environmental justice law was created to confront. When I review Merck's environmental justice impact statement and now hearing their presentation, I noticed that they've emphasized the grants that they've provided to a few local organizations. While I appreciate any investment in community work, let's be clear. Providing grants does not erase the ongoing pollution or the health burdens caused by their operations. You cannot fund your way out of responsibility. Good P R and small scale philanthropy does not equal environmental justice. Merck admits that they're not adding new equipment or increasing emissions, but doing no further harm is not the same as doing good. Under the E J law and rules, facilities in overburning communities have an obligation to reduce their existing emissions. Raway and Linden both score twenty two out of twenty five stresses, as you all mentioned. Our air, water and soil are already at a breaking point. So I'm just going to repeat what everyone else has been saying. It's that Merck boilers, as we know, they're old. They're more than twenty years old. We definitely recommend electrifying them, which could reduce particulate matter by ninety six percent and nitrogen oxides by ninety percent. Those aren't just numbers. Their hospital visits avoided, lives extended, and children breathing easier. Electrifying their fleet of trucks and installing onsite charging would further reduce diesel pollution, which is directly linked to asthma and cardiovascular illness. The E J law, you know, it's not about maintaining the status quo. That's why we fought so hard for this in our communities. You know, it's about accountability and healing. The Department of Environmental Protection must hold Merck to that standard. And Merck, you should do the same. You know, require yourselves and urgent D E P to require them to electrify their boiler, position their fleet and take measurable steps to reduce emissions in the communities they impact. You know, our communities like North, Raway, Linden, and any other overburning community, we definitely deserve more than compliance and more than charity. We deserve clean air, healthy families, and a future where environmental justice is more than a line item in a corporate presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. I appreciate it. Next up is Gustavo.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can. Yep, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gustavo Alcoser, and my pronouns are he. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gustavo Alcoser, and my pronouns are he/him. And I am speaking from Newark, New Jersey, from Ironbound Community Corporation. And here at the Ironbound, we are also an overburdened community. And I wanted to just emphasize the importance of suggestion and implementing. The electrification of your boiler systems. I am seeing here that your boilers are over 20 years old and they should be replaced with newer technologies. These new electrified boilers would alleviate pollution. I think that, I'm not the only one to say this, but the transition that I think we are all alluding to. Is one that would ensure that the pollution and that the precise stressors. Are gonna be eliminated so that we can have a dignified, a more dignified life and a better, a better health. When I'm talking about implementing electrified boilers. I also think that it's important to highlight that technologies such as. Yeah, heat pumps and thermal batteries not only decrease our pollution. But it also increase energy efficiency. There are certain cost savings here in this proposed suggestion. That the American Lung Association estimates to be of around 43 billions in savings of public health benefits. And preventing around 3,000 premature deaths and mitigating of 8,000 new asthma cases. So apart from the ensuring that we're going to be now electrifying the boilers, there is also. A profit component there that I think is also a new and. A good thing to also put into consideration. And I also want to mention that Merck's 2025 impact report has identified fleet electrification as a roadmap goal. And I think that this facility in New Jersey should serve as a test pilot for delivery van and truck electrification. I think that. With the electrification of boilers and with the enforcement of. Creating and spearheading now this solution to ensure the reduction of. Of pollution. I think that there's a great opportunity there to apply. The electrification of trucks as well, apart from the electrification of boilers. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gustavo. I believe Rachel Davis is next. Rachel.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Dawn Davis. I serve as the Public Policy and Justice Organizer for Water Spirit, an eco-spiritual nonprofit centered on water as the source and sustainer of all life. Water Spirit is sponsored by the Sisters of St. Joseph of Peace, and our comments are on behalf of our thousands of community members throughout the entire state. Northeast region, land and planet, and an allyship with the frontline and fence-lined residents most affected by what would be this renewal. We are grounded in the belief that clean air, clean water, a stable climate and healthy environment are not environmental goals alone. They're moral and spiritual imperatives that must be turned into constitutional rights. ZIP codes shouldn't be determinants of life expectancy, as has been echoed previously by other commenters who are residents of the area and surrounding. We recommend that Merck fully transition its boilers to electric systems, as others have said, phasing out fossil fuel. Combustion in favor of high-efficiency electrified technology. This shift is necessary to reduce harmful co-pollutants, including particulate matter. Which disproportionately burdens overburdened communities such as Raway and Linden. Electrification of boilers represents a cost-saving investment. Over time, my background is in economics. This would bring with it lower maintenance costs, greater efficiency and alignment with human and state mandates to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. In tandem, we urge, again, as others have said, Merck transition its medium and heavy-duty vehicle fleets to fully electric. These actions should not be optional or merely aspirational, particularly as a result of the EJ Cumulative Impacts Law. Which we've been working alongside right before it became law and then all the way through till now. Electrification is urgently needed in communities like Raway and Linden, which bear a cumulative pollution burden among the highest in the state. As you shared in your presentation, based on NJDEP's own data, this area carries a combined stressor value of 22 of 25, a stark indicator of environmental, economic, public health, et cetera, burden. We call on local municipalities, of course, to adopt cumulative impact ordinances. We stress the state law already recognizes this region as an overburdened community. Due to both its environmental and demographic indicators, including a high minority population. We're compelled to speak for the unseen, streams stressed by nitrogen deposition. Lungs inflamed by diesel exhaust and children growing up in neighborhoods surrounded by industry, dealing with asthma and cancer. Merck has the resources and responsibility to lead and comply with the EJ law in action. Electrifying its operations is not just a technical upgrade, it's a statement of values. We call on NJDEP to require full electrification of boilers and fleets as a condition of permitting. And we will call on Merck to rise to the challenge, choosing a healthier, more equitable path forward, actually really being a good neighbor. We will also share comments and writing. Thank you.
Thanks for the comment, Rachel. Is there anybody else that has a comment? I see Amy raised her hand. Anybody besides Amy? Then we'll take Amy's question. Alright, Amy, go ahead.
I didn't mean to raise my hand. I'm fine.
Oh, okay. No worries. Thank you so much. Anybody have any other comments in the room? No comments? Anybody else on the phone have a comment? Alright, can we go to the next slide, Margot, please? Really appreciate everybody coming to tonight's meeting at the Linden Laboratory and calling in on Zoom. Please remember, we have a 90-day public comment period. It ends in 30 days. It's been open since August 22nd. We sent an email to Carissa Alexandra at Merck. Please mail me a letter at our U.N. patient. Next slide. And that's it. We appreciate you for participating in tonight's meeting. Have a great night.